Calling the meeting to order. Please join us for the pledge and a moment of silence as we honor our fallen officers whose legacy continues to shape and strengthen our community. We remember with gratitude Springer of alumni Detective Sergeant Cody Becker, Detective Isaiah Emanhiser, and Detective Mark Baker with their for their unwavering dedication and service. Roll call.
Barshinger. Baum. Ramsey. Rich. Here. Shear. Stein. White.
Yeah.
Will Sett. Here.
Mr. Rich is out for personal reasons. We have not met in executive session since the last meeting. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the board at this time?
Hello. Derek Henning. I'm a resident also. President of SGA. I would just like to state that for me both personally and I know there are many of us in the in my organization that would like to see this superintendent search go differently than last time. We would like to see the community at large as well as the stakeholders at the district be involved in this process. That's it. Thanks.
Anyone else? Right. Seeing none. We will move to personnel with Mr. Stein.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. As you know, the board directed the administration specifically Hope Weiss, the HR director, myself, as well as then with the representative Doug Stein, and the three of us were able to put together what we believe is the initial part of this superintendent search. You've received information with various options before you. You've received a chart that also refers to the the possibility of bringing in a consultant or other options we'll get to. You've also received a tentative and just the first sketch of a job description. I'm sorry, of the job posting and also a revised what we're recommending as a revised job description. The one we had recently was from 1997, and we felt it was time to sort of bring us up into 2025. So you have all of that before you. I hope you had an opportunity to look over that information. I'm not going to read a lot to you because obviously both the public as well. And I do want to mention, and I guess this is not, I had this in my thoughts, Derek, before you spoke, but I've been already told by the board and anything that I have to do with this, that this is going to be a very open search. As you know, some of you already, many of you already received a notification email that the search is now going to be discussed tonight so that we're trying to tell as many people that this is beginning. So people are saying, well, when is that happening? They now know that it sort of begins tonight. Actually, the work began before tonight, but so we are going to try to through every step where I've been directed by the board to make sure that it is public, it is open regardless of which direction the board chooses to go. We're going to do everything we can to make sure everything is as transparent. I will put a caveat to that. As you know, when you're dealing with references and confidential things, not everything can be public. I just say that if any of you have ever applied for a job somewhere, some of that stuff cannot legally even be aired too much, but we will do everything we can. And and I am absolutely as well as the board is or absolutely committed to that. That being said, we'll jump in here. I don't want to go on and on as I can, but we put together and I mentioned the people that had to do with that along with some support from Suzanne Sterner as well. But we put together what we think are three options. Let me state them simply. Option A would be to conduct a search only utilizing professional staff of this district. In other words, internal staff would be conducting the search from all those things I just mentioned through the whole process, getting candidates, going through all of that. We would have the support of the solicitor, of course, but through that whole process, it would be an internal, not it would be done internally with the SGASD staff. Obviously, anyone can apply for it from all across the country and the world for that matter, but the search would be conducted by internal district staff that we have yet to identify. But if that's an option, we'll go there. I mean, if that's selected. Option B is a is to organize the it would be an independent consultant completely where the consultant firm would be hired, contracted with the board, and that firm then would be responsible from basically beginning to end to make sure that we have a superintendent selected. And obviously, that goes through contract and all of that. That's option B. Again, that would be a consultant doing that. I'm not saying that they wouldn't talk to the district. That's sort of absurd to think, but the lion's share of that would be done, managed, organized, directed by a consulting firm. Option C is what we sort of termed a hybrid, and that would mean that we would hire a consultant of sorts, a consultant, and also utilize the SGASD staff to provide that local flavor, that yes, but in Spring Grove kind of comments, and also to afford the local staff also the opportunity to have a broader selection of national and state candidates. Obviously, the bigger you go with the consultant firm, the more likely you would bring in people from all around the world, and I use that seriously. So that would be and you would sort of bring in, I guess, if I can say it this way, the best parts of the consultant firm and the best parts of the local staff into a hybrid that would be able to bring out and select the very best candidate. At all times, board would be obviously involved in this process, would be kept informed. I think I put that in here. You would receive updates and so forth. There's nothing's going to be done quietly except things that we legally have to do confidentially. So those are the three options that I propose so that I sort of listed here which way we would go depending on what the board wishes to do. And let me just go through that. If the board chooses option A, which is again, the local district doing all things, that decision can be made as early as tonight. I'm not recommending that. I'm just saying it can be made as early because we have a voting meeting set up. That can be decided already tonight. What we're recommending, again, this is all here, I'm sort of reviewing it for everyone. What we're recommending or what we're the other two options, option B would be to bring in a consultant only, and we would suggest that we bring back two consultants from the chart that you have in front of you to a special session of the board, which would be held on October 6th. And at that time, they those two consultants would present 15 minutes presentation on how they would work with the district or how they would conduct their search as a a separate consultant entity, consulting entity. At that time, there would be opportunity for questions and answers and so forth. Also, if you're also considering option C, we would still bring back two consultants because then the consultants would be saying, this is how we will work with the board as in a hybrid setting. And this and the other one would be, this is how we work in the board completely as a consultant. So on October 6th, we could bring back two consultants or more if you want, but two consultants that they would present in advance, basically a contract of sorts of what they would do if they were the consultant only and what they would do if they were also operating in a hybrid situation. So that is the goal of October 6th. At that time, obviously, there would be a presentation, 15 minutes, five minutes for Q and A, and then the same with the second consultant. And then the board at that time could discuss all of that. They could make a decision. You could make a decision that night on October 6th, or you could say, let's think about it for a week and then come back on October 13th to the next meeting and vote then as to what you want. Obviously, there is no rush, but there is no doubt the sooner you can get a permanent person in this seat to move forward, the district needs to look far beyond me and far down the road. So the sooner that can happen, I think personally, I think that's the best for what we can do, but there is no rush to this. I just want to make sure everyone understands that the timeline is going to be a logical timeline. It's not a rush timeline, and I don't want to put the board in any position where they think they have to make a decision if they don't feel like comfortable, comfortable making that decision at that time. Any question? I'd like to go draw your attention then to the chart, but I'm going to ask and pause for a moment because I talk a lot. Do you have any questions? About the three options?
Yes. And this might, Hope, can I ask you a question? If, because I want to keep this in mind when I'm looking through the the list. If we were to go with a hybrid model. Okay. If we were to go with a hybrid model, are there like recommendations for from the HR department as to how the HR department would like for us to like utilize an outside agency so that I can keep in my mind if that's the way it was headed as to what strengths are we looking for from the different organizations that would be presented? Does that does that make sense? Does that question make sense?
So if I understand you correctly, you're asking if a hybrid option was selected.
Yeah, if we went that way.
Yes. What information would be requested from me or the HR department on strengths that we would look for in a superintendent?
No, it would actually be the organization. Like if we're going to do a hybrid where the HR, our HR department, you know, your team will be working with one of these organizations, what recommendations would your team have as to like, hey, I would recommend whoever we bring in be really strong at hypothetically vetting candidates or like, what is the thing that would really help your team out in this? Because if it's, you know, if there's something that you're like, I don't really need that, but this is their strength, then I'm personally going to throw them kind of out. But does that make better sense? Does my question make sense?
So I think, one, it would not just be a decision of the HR department. I would also want input from the rest of the staff on what they would also look for. But I think a big thing would be community involvement in the superintendent search process. And communication. I think those are huge when it comes to any consultant that you're going to consider. How well do they communicate with the community, with the school board and with the staff? And what does their involvement with all three entities look like in that hybrid search? Does that make sense?
I think in a hybrid model, the key is communication and like being a true partner together. And that, again, is through communication. So when we look at that hybrid model, I think, Hope, being that liaison for the board of working together is is how I would operate that as a board member. I don't know, but that's what you're looking for in that question?
Yeah, I mean, that was all helpful. I'm just trying to, because the hyper model is very ambiguous, right? Like, because we don't, we don't know exactly sure what what that's going to look like yet, and that's totally fine. But if there were. If there was a, I don't, this, this word is not the right word, but if there was like weaknesses within the HR department, I don't like the word weaknesses, but if there's something where you're like, this isn't something where we can, like, it would be great if we were a little bit better in this area. This is, this is some way in which an outside organization could help that process. What what things would those be? Because I know there are things in which you're great at, and so not something I'm looking for.
If I may jump in because that's what I do. I think that the key word is facilitation. I think we would want to someone to facilitate and use their expertise to guide us. Hope has never done a search. I have not done a search. So yeah, we're going to need some advice as to how to do this, and it wouldn't just be the two of us. I don't want to imply that. But there would be the typical, what is the board looking for in a superintendent? It's going to be a community. What are you looking for in a superintendent? Staff, what are you looking for in a community? And that's the expertise that the consultant would bring. If I may, I think, I think the hybrid has some merit and to consider because we can also inject the Spring Grove piece to that. I'm sorry, Hope, you knew that was going to happen. I'm sorry. But that would Eric would bring in the Spring Grove piece so that along the way we can say, that's fine for that national shirt search in Arizona you did, but this is Spring Grove, Pennsylvania. This is Pennsylvania. Pennsylvania education, as you know, is coded and as is all states, but I mean, it's unique in that. And there are lots of firms that will do things. I think as the board looks, if they want to, maybe putting this a little bit early, Eric, and I'm going to sort of extrapolate from there. The another thing that we would need or would be, it would be beneficial. We don't have all of the resources to get some of the candidates' names so that we can actually look at their resumes, et cetera. And that's where we would say to consultant A, we need to have no fewer than 25 people that meet these things that the community and the board just said we need have at it. But these are the things that are important to Spring Grove based on the surveys that we've read in. It's a little bit of a local control thing that I think I'm sort of suggesting, but at the same time, bring us your expertise. Bring us how, what surveys have you used? What are the instruments? What are the the PR different pieces of this that we would need? What's the timeline? What's a reasonable timeline? You know, all of that, if that helps, Eric. The other thing I'm going to suggest to the board as they sort of think of this is as I was reviewing and others were reviewing the chart, and we were trying to determine exactly what are the criteria that we would use? Some words came to us as a group. Cost. Just going to say it out there. These are in any order, I should have started with that. Familiarity to us and to the state and to how it works in the state of Pennsylvania. Not to say, we have a pretty good educational system in Pennsylvania. We keep getting teachers coming from other states for that reason. Is it local to Pennsylvania or is this something really far away? And by the way, we're in South Central Pennsylvania, near Gettysburg, near Hannover, near York. Or is it someone that can sort of find us on a map? What kind of references have they provided? What references have we been able to find? As we all know, Google was out there, you can find anything on anybody. You just have to make sure it's not AI and you have to make sure that it's legitimate in the reviews and we all know what reviews. And you have to make sure that it's legitimate in the reviews, and we all know what reviews are. What kind of search experience? Are they brand new? Have they had, have they been around the block a little bit? What exactly do they bring to the table? These are all things for the board to think about. You probably have many more. And the last one, and this sort of touches on the hybrid. How open would this group be to using the staff? Because sometimes, and I've been told and have some information, that they'll, a company will come in and say, this is how we do it. Oh, sorry, but this is how we do it. But, but no, this is how we do it, because some of them will have like a canned thing. A presentation, if you will, a process that they're going to use, whether we try to say, but, 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 but. I don't want to paint any of these folks in bad lights. There are reasons why all of these firms exist. Obviously, they wouldn't be in existence without success. So I'm going to suggest all of them have some success. I think the thing now is to try to fit the needs of our community here in Spring Grove.
I think for some of us, we've, we've been engaged in two or more superintendent searches. I'm not sure Doug, how many you've been involved in, but from the past two, there's things that I've really liked. And there's things that I really didn't like. So one was completely an internal function. We ran everything through HR. And then this most recent was, we used a, a service only and did not have any representation from the district. So. Leading with, you know, a little bit of emotion here, it's like, I would like the best of both worlds and, you know, Hope really being that liaison. And I know I'm one of nine, but she has the inside inner workings of the district more than we do. We're, we're volunteers. So I, I would lean on her to be our voice when working with the search firm. But also the search firm bringing their expertise and, and their reputation to recruit good candidates for us. So that's my opinion on, on a direction. If that's what we're kind of looking for tonight, I don't know if that's what we're looking for. So, but that's mine. I'm just going to say it.
If you would like me, Rachel, I can go through each of these, just so that we can just briefly look at each of these. Because the decision that Eric, you've already alluded to, what decision do we want to make, doesn't have to be made before we look at this chart. So let's take a moment. I want to.
One thing before we do that, the cost they got on here, is that for? The, the model we're looking at, or is that for a full-time consultant, them doing everything?
As of now, those are the numbers for a full-time consultant. Anything beyond that, Rodney, we would have to sort of sit down and negotiate. And if you choose to tonight, for example, that's Hope's homework, is to sit down and say, okay, the board would like to come back and do these two things. One is, what would it cost and what would it look like with a hybrid? What would it cost and what would it look like with just you doing the consultant? So we're sort of trying to give the board sort of those two options. And it would be quite frankly, the success of the successful consultant. One, if a consultant is even selected. Or two, how did they meet the criteria or the demands that we put on them to give us the hybrid and give us the consultant only? Does that answer your question, Rodney? Thank you. So I'm just going to jump in here. A, a shout out to Hope. She put this together in a very short period of time. And Suzanne and Doug Stein, as directed by the board, we were, were going through this. So some of us have seen this before. There's a, a few things in here that we don't have answers for, because quite frankly, either people didn't get back to us. Or we didn't want to put something down in here that we didn't have some concrete source that someone could say, well, where did you get that? Hope pretty much can tell you where she got all of this. A lot of it was website search, calling some references. Obviously, there are local districts listed there. Guess who were called? You know, she was able to contact those local districts. So I'm going to jump into this. I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but I will at least give each of these. The LIU 12, and I probably may sound a little slanted, but I'm going to try not to. But I sort of already have looked at some of these and I thought, well, this would work with one and not the other and kind of thing. But anyhow, LIU 12, they're new at this. If you look over at the far right, they are new to the business of superintendent searches. Thus, and forgive me, shout out to Rachel. She said, can we do a chart with pros and cons? So shout out to Rachel. Here's the list of pros and cons. It helps the board to try to glean through some of this information, because it is sort of overwhelming. But two, some of these came from reviews that she found online. Some of them came from actual phone calls with people that may have used this search. And we can ask her for further detail if we can, as long as she can publicly respond. But as you can see, some of the pros for LIU designed to be affordable, as you can see. Now, I will tell you, there is no cost listed because we have not been given a cost. So that's one of those things that I would suggest, nobody shows up on October 6th without some sort of a cost. One way or the other. So have a nice day, but you need to come up with a cost. That may mean a conversation with that vendor first, because they're going to say, well, what is it you want us to do? So that doesn't mean they're just going to magically figure out what we want. So a lot has to happen between even now and then. It's based in South Central Pennsylvania, focuses on regional educational services for minority with local districts and educational needs tailored to Spring Grove needs and preferences. We felt that, we, it's cope and others that had input on this, felt that those would be the pros of using an LIU. LIU we're a member of, you reach out, you drive 15 minutes and you're there, kind of thing. So it's like a hands-on, come over here, we need you now as a pro. Negative, new to the business of superintendent searches there, because of that, there are a few references. Limited public data superintendent search outcomes, and they may lack a broader search resources compared to like a national firm. We're not sure how far LIU reaches out into the pool of candidates that we certainly will need before we can do anything. At least most things. McPherson Jacobson, I'm going to point some things out. I don't want to be negative. I am saying the price is there. It's also $37,000. And there are some here that I, as I mentioned, some of the criteria that you may want to use. But McPherson and Jacobson is, is based in the Maricopa, Arizona, and that is the base fee for them. But the Charlotte Mecklenburg in 2018, that's how much it was. And then, of course, Bridgeport, Connecticut was there. So you can see it's a sizable amount of money. It's also then, if you look at the pros. In the business of national searches for boards, education since 1991, they have experience. Structured five-phase process with stakeholder input, transparent and systematic approach. National reach with 125 plus consultants, efficient timeline. Identify desirable characteristics, establish timeline advertising, Fox Chapel is the closest school that we could find. And that's an affluent school district, I think, outside of Philadelphia. No, Pittsburgh. Thank you, Pittsburgh. Cons, past criticism over vetting procedures in isolated cases. Again, she got some of these from reviews online and other places. Less localized experience here in Pennsylvania. Pricing highly variable and potentially expensive. Higher costs compared to the regional firms and some boards negotiating contracts due to cost concerns. I, I'm just going to keep moving because I know there's a lot here and there's other things to do, but this is pretty important. Pars, which is for you don't, if you don't know, it's the Pennsylvania Association of Rural and Small Schools. As you can see, that's a considerably lower price at 9,800, 2,000 for expenses. If they go over, he eats it. The gentleman's name is Dr. Ed Albert, as you can see, is listed there. We do have some local recommendations for Mr. Albert. And as you can see, if it does go beyond, he does not charge for meals or mileage and things like that, which can add up a lot. The timeline is listed there. Over/under pros. Deep experience with rural and small Pennsylvania districts, personalized service, video screening. Strong rural district expertise, personalized service, that input from staff, parents and community based in PA. Spends time at each school in the district to gain additional information with the surveys and can work in, with in-house staff to tailor the search as needed. Limited national search is a con, smaller team and fewer resources than larger firms. Okay, for ZIO, as you can see, the price tag is again, I'm pointing it out because I, I think you probably would want to have that pointed out. The cost is there. If you go over to that, they use superintendent personas. Offers 12-month coaching and strategic planning post-hire. Holistic, community-driven and supportive throughout, strong stakeholder engagement tools. Deep stakeholder engagement, established leadership role. If I sound like I'm reading off of their brochures, I am in some case, right, Hope? That's where we got some of this. That's why it sounds so pie in the sky-ish, if you know what I mean. I would hope that they would have good brochures. Negatives or cons, a lack of publicly available references, case examples. Help me?
It's very strange. Turn it off and put it back.
I thought Chris turned me off. I can shout really loud, but I don't know if I can shout to the people. Sure. Testing. Thank you, Suzanne. Didn't work, Chris. You'll have to shut me off another time. Lack of publicly available references and case examples, limited data on Pennsylvania-specific experiences and less transparent pricing and timeline information. I'm going to keep moving. PSBA, as you probably know, Pennsylvania's School Boards Association. And there, Steel Valley paid 25,000 as a flat fee. We're still a little bit uncertain what their fee would be for us. This Hope is shaking her head, but that's about what we could find recently. So we're talking about 25,000. If you look at the pros, deep statewide experience in Pennsylvania, affordable flat fee, perhaps. Strongly community engagement throughout the surveys. Under cons, offers a redo for 25% of the original fee of the leaves within, nevermind. Less exposure to national candidate pools and maybe more procedural than personalized. If I may, that's, I think, what I've been hearing from people. We need to not be as, what's the word, procedural as not personalized. We need to be more personalized with procedure of balance. I'm not saying negative about PSB. I'm just saying that. Rayan Associates focuses on visionary leadership, equity and innovation, large candidate pool and national reach. Experiment and able to pick up uninterrupted searches and not being, and hiring non-traditional candidates. The price there is 36.8. The cons, not based in Pennsylvania, limited Pennsylvania-specific pricing, blah, blah, blah. School Exec Connect, as you can see, we have no pricing available at this time from Hope's research. And I look at pros, national reach, strong governance, 97% placement success rate. Strong governance and board planning support. If educational executive resigns or is dismissed within 24 months of the starting date. The school executive connect, or school exec connects. Consultants will conduct a new search for the board at no additional expenses, fees except expenses. They also guarantee not to recruit a school administrator they placed throughout the term of the first two contracts, not based in Pennsylvania. Limited confirmed experience in Pennsylvania, less transparent to pricing. Last but not least, listed here is the Duraco Education Consulting. Also, his partner is Connie R. Kindler, educational consultant. We're not exactly sure which of those two, but they work together. So I think one of them would be sort of assigned to us. And that's the case. The basic fee indicated to be about 19,000 with additional expenses for printing, advertising, travel, et cetera. The timeline is listed there. The pros based in Pennsylvania includes leadership development, strategic planning, onboarding services. Mark Duraco and Connie Kindler bring over 90 years of combined experiences that they're both superintendents of education leadership. Retired superintendents, both have led high-performing districts and received state and national recognition. Emphasis on confidentiality, community fit and long-term success. Manages only one school district search at a time, which is why one of them, I think, would go one way and one would go the other way, but they are in, in, they work together. Pros or negatives, I'm sorry, cons. While client satisfaction is implied, there are no published quantitative success metrics. May be a significant investment for smaller districts. Protocols requiring confidentiality might limit the extension, extent of information available to public. And I sort of mentioned that some things just simply can't be put out there to be read, references and things like that. I went very fast. I did read those last two columns because I thought the gist of what the board needs to decide may rest there, but all the other details are there. I will certainly entertain, as will Hope and Doug, or whoever wants to answer questions at this time, or Rachel, have at it.
Do you want us to drill this list down tonight, or is that for October 6th?
If I may respectfully ask, if you can drill it down to two people tonight. We can invite those two vendors, consultants then, to October 6th. So that at that time, they can do the presentations, they can answer questions. And the board can either deliberate that night and make a decision on one of those two or neither. Or, and then following that, they would go into the October 13th, where the board would make a final decision, exactly what we're doing.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. So we want to, as a board right now, drill down to two. Businesses, so we can at least get the presentation set up for October 6th.
Don't, don't we want to first decide which of the three options and then?
Then on the sixth?
Yes.
If, if, and, and yeah, that's fine, unless five people say they just want Hope to do the whole thing.
I think if we can. Collectively.
Did you get back off, off the floor?
Drawl off floor. I think if collectively we could remove A. Then we could move to a decision because regardless, we're going to need one of these people for option B or C. Does that make sense? So do we all have a shake of the head, like we want to move forward with B or C? How do we need to do that? Do I need like a, just a direction, conversation? Ben, we'll go around. Rodney? A or C? Okay.
To do C, I don't know how we're going to ask them to do a presentation until. We sit down and tell them what we want them to do or what we're going to do. You know what I mean? How? I don't know how they can make up their mind or we can even make up our mind until we know we give them, this is what we want you to do. What is that going to cost us? And that's going to help make up the mind between them, so.
Right.
I guess if you want to hop back, I'll vote C. That's my, I mean, that's where I'm going to end up.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's okay too. I mean, if. Yes. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we can go around and if we just want to move forward with C, that's completely fine. So. I guess, you know, not removing A. Like if there, if you have a preference between B and C, at this point, I have five people who don't want to even acknowledge A, so we're good. From that regard, so drilling down on B or C. Just Douglas, you didn't get a chance to even say anything. Sorry, we're moving forward. Yeah, what would you?
I, I would recommend A or C, but on that note. Our last consultant, we should go back to him and get a 90% refund.
Yeah. We don't want the 25% off for B two. We're moving.
No.
Moving forward, please. So we are going to go around for your preference of B or C. You want to start C? B or C? You want C? Okay, then you want C. We're only voting on B or C right now. Douglas?
Speed's bottom.
Speed, cool.
C is fine, but I think that in order for us to do C, we have to clearly delineate what we, what we are going to be responsible for. And what they are going to be responsible for, so that they can come back, give us specific pricing and give us a presentation on what we're looking.
And I think that can be part of the outreach. We want this to be very clear, who is responsible for what.
I'm sorry, C, and when they present on the sixth. We can ask questions about what would they propose on a hybrid? But then we're not going to pass a contract on this until at least the next meeting. So there is time then when they come back after that presentation on October 6th to, you know, drill down to a little more specifics.
Eric? Okay, I am C also. So it looks like we are moving forward with option C. Now we need to.
Just to be clear, so we're going to not, we're not voting on it on the sixth. We're voting on the following meeting.
Right, so the sixth will get presentation and then we'll have two weeks, not, no, one week to digest all the information and vote on the 13th. For the consultant.
I had a question. Do you think most, do you think there would be any consultant who would not want to do C? Who does, who just wants to do it all by themselves?
As she approaches the podium. Karen, I think that that's where the decision-making now comes into the chart. Because there's clearly some there that even said they would work with a hybrid. I think some of those that I'm, don't think that you're even going to look at would prefer, and I don't want to speak for them, but I think they would prefer to be their own show. Hope.
And like Dr. Renat said, I would look at those pros and cons, and you'll see in the cons that there are consulting firms that it kind of alludes to. That they're not so willing to do the hybrid option.
For going through a process of elimination, something that came up. The last time we did this, and I feel like may help narrow the field, it may. It may not, but I don't know about other people, but I would really like to see a company that has more local Pennsylvania experience. So, and if that is a priority for people, then it narrows it down to three on its own. If that is not a priority, but just reading through and trying to decipher what the stuff is, if there's five people that want a local company, we just cut it down to three.
Yeah, we're looking for more boutique rather than national chain. We want Pennsylvania specialty that those were, I wrote down that I liked Pars and Duraco because they were Pennsylvania-based. And those would be my recommendations if we had to pick two this evening.
If I may jump in very quickly, and I like the direction that you're going as well. But I do want to make sure that everyone understands this actually, by your decisiveness tonight, I want to thank the board because this will make October 6th that much more beneficial. Because now they have one task to bring, not two. They will bring with what does a hybrid look like? And what are the expectations that they have? And what are the expectations? I also would suggest very quickly, since we're going back to that, and then we can go back to this if you don't mind, Rachel, is that we allow Hope and perhaps Doug Stein and me to have a meeting of sorts with these two companies. It can be Zoom, so that we can sort of start to get a feel instead of having all nine trying to sort of weigh in. But we can try to get a feel for where they are and what local expectations that we may have as well. We have some already in our heads, but I'm not just saying Doug only because at one point the Doug, you know, the, the board directed Hope, Doug and I to sort of move forward. And that's why I use that group. You can put anybody that you want. But that way we can sort of, sort of come to on the October 6th, those two vendors, if you select two, those two vendors will have a much better, it will be a much more fruitful evening. So thank you for your decisiveness. Now, back to Rachel with talking about.
Yeah, I want to open up the floor to like discussion because I really do feel, like you said, very, it's very valuable. If we could walk away with two that we can give direction to Hope and get that all scheduled. Yes, so opening the floor.
So. You're reading my mind, Rodney. So I am for, so there are two reasons why I think it might be beneficial to do three. So I'm also with you on the Pars and the Duraco. They're on my list.
Yeah.
For me, I also have the LIU on the list, and I know they're very new to it, but they're very local and have a very Pennsylvania connection. If you, if we only choose to, choose to, and you all meet with those two people and Duraco says, I'm not doing a hybrid. We've funneled our way into one, whereas if we had three, and maybe all three are willing to do it. But just in case one is not willing to do it, that could immediately make our decision for us when we might not be happy with it. Maybe we are.
LIU was my third, so I'm, I mean, it's our time that we're giving. Yeah.
Me, so there's three left. And I, if it's an extra 15-minute presentation, I know how much Dr. White loves presentations. But if it's an extra 15-minute presentation and an extra five or 10 minutes worth of questions for us to feel like we're in a better position and we got the right person, then let's just do it at three.
Yep. Yeah.
Rodney, is the LIU the third one that you were looking at or you were talking about three?
Mr. Stein, any thoughts?
How do I do that, Eric? We should not allow the other presenters to be in the room. So they don't get to hear what the other people are saying. Yeah, and two or three to me is fine. I like narrowing it down, but you know, three is okay. And I'm hoping that we will, they will send us information. You know, I know this is close, but they need to get some information a few days ahead of time. So we have a little bit of time to see their brochure or something before we show up at that.
I knew you were going to say that. We like things ahead of time.
I like things in advance. And I also like time to think about things before I vote.
Yep. Yeah, so we can see, I think Hope has some marching orders in regard to what we need for the sixth. But direction-wise, are there, are we hitting the mark for the three that you would like to see?
Well, I, I like Duraco and Pars. They were the two I think just jumped out at me.
Next. Karen? You're good? Mr. White?
I'm fine, but my only problem is with LIU, Tracy is a, just an HR. She, she's, you know, I consider her still a newbie, so I don't know what experience she's going to have as far as locating superintendents, unless she's going to have someone to help her.
So Doug, as Hope's walking to the podium again. That's one of the things that was, I agree with you, and that's why I was curious. What is she looking for? Because I think the LIU, if, one of the reasons why we're leaning towards someone to come in to help us, an outside consultant to help us, if it's just broad scope to be able to pull people from Pennsylvania, just being connected to the LIU, so off throughout all Pennsylvania. So that could be a benefit if that's one of the things that we're looking to utilize.
Tracy is just the POC. She would not be the one handling the actual superintendent search.
Point of contact for those.
I'm sorry, point of contact.
The other thing you said you worry about, what if they don't do the hybrid? We could have the third person be a backup. And once the administration reaches out to those two, if one of them says no, you go to the third. If they both say, we do the hybrid, you could just go with two. Just another thing to consider.
If, if I can jump in quick, they, they will do hybrid. We can confirm that. That Hope's shaking her head. Yes, they, we know that the three, not all these I can say that for, but we know that the three that are in contention right now will do hybrid. So just that can, you can, and I think three is not a bad idea. And let me ask, I need another direction here. If, for example, we've, we've selected as a board, Rachel did, I guess, October 6th as a special session. We can't guarantee, because we didn't in any way contact them and say, are you available October 6th? It's possible that they may say no. And I don't know if we want to dig in and say, well, if you don't show up, you don't get the job, which we could say, but we have to be careful that we're not cutting off just because of an already other conflict that's been, or a commitment to another district or whatever. So if I may, very quickly, so if, if we can't pull the October 6th together with three of them, then we can always move that to October 13th. But that's going to extend the board meeting obviously longer. With three, that's another hour plus questions and things like that you'll add to that night, unless you pick another night for a special session.
I think we need to also say, are we okay with a Zoom? I know it's more impersonal, but if someone can't travel to be here that day, are we as a board okay with them doing a Zoom presentation for us to keep this moving? I, again, I don't want to rush this, but in the essence of doing it all in one night and, and tackling it, I want to make sure that the board is open to that option. If Pars comes in and says, we'd love to be part of it, but can we, I want to make sure you're armed with as much approvals as the board can give at this point. So that gives us a week, so. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm a in-person kind of girl for this, for this specific piece. Because, you know, we want to ensure that we pick the right consultant. So if we can give some backup dates, I think that would be a better option than Zoom.
Yeah, same with me. That week is pretty safe. 5:30, we were done? Yeah.
So we'll shoot for the six, which also is publicly announced already. So if we do shift it to the seventh or eighth, we will have, I'm looking at Suzanne, we'll have to make sure that gets changed as well publicly, because that's out there. But we'll have six first choice, seventh, second choice, eighth, third choice. I'm seeing nod, so Hope.
Pressure them into the six.
And protocols, are you okay with Hope and Doug and I? Or anyone else who wants to?
Yeah, as our personnel committee, you know, chairperson, absolutely.
To sort of sit down and have some Zoom conversations with these people and sort of give them a feel for what we're looking. And we'll speak on behalf of the board, but not, knowing that we're not the board. And we will say that to them all the time, that we're just like the, like the scouts out here, sort of trying to, trying to figure out exactly what's coming or what, what we have.
Awesome. Okay. Hope, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact Mr. Stein. I know this is a lot and we're moving and grooving, so thank you. All right. Motion to adjourn the DSF meeting. Second, all in favor. Meeting adjourned. Calling to order the regular voting meeting, the same board members staying in attendance as the meeting prior. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? Right, moving on, I am turning it over to Dr. Renat for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Robal, President Robal. Shame on me, this one over here. Okay, I'd like to, I, I just have to say this because it's in, it's on all of our minds. But as you know, our hearts and, and prayers go out to the families that are dealing with the losses of our police officers, as well as those two families and the police officers who are injured and the whole community. Our police department, as you know, is deeply rocked by this. And I just want to tell you that as we went into shelter in place and so forth this week, I cannot tell you, every place I got to, and as we were sort of going through this, the buildings were, were, it was sort of organized. It was organized, excuse me. It was organized, every staff member was helping in some way from whoever it was. I mean, from the teacher trying to entertain students for an extra hour, to the instructional aides, to the emotional support children that are suddenly there much longer than they probably wanted to be, to the bus drivers. And my heart went out to the bus drivers. Some of them were literally very close to being on site when this was happening. And they saw the emergency response vehicles going past them with kids on their buses. And we had to make some quick decisions without a lot of information. But at the same time, every student got home safely from the school's perspective. I wanted to say thank you professionally and personally for what I'm looking out there, for what the staff did. As a board, I don't think you could have asked for more. The comments that we've been receiving and sometimes some of those fun ones come in to my office or to the principal's offices overwhelmingly supportive. Thank you for making it safe as possible. The interactions that we had in different buildings where I kept saying, thank you for your patience, thank you for your patience. Thank, you know, every kid got home safely in the end. So a shout out to this, to the staff, to the bus drivers, to everybody who has anything to do with this district. You should be proud. It was really a springbrow strong moment for all of us. And I, I just want to say that to start. I won't belabor that, but I think, I think you understand. Dr. Lamont, come on down. Come on down. You're not just going to sit back there. I'd like to introduce to you Dr. Katie, if I may, Lamont. She is to be congratulated, as she is now Dr. Lamont, who successfully defended her dissertation on Wednesday, September 3rd. And I'm going to give this a shot just for fun. The title of her thesis was and is a phenomenological, no, phenomenological study of overcoming school experiences of disability-related stigma to gain competitive employment for individuals with learning disabilities. She earned her PhD in special education from Liberty University in Good Old Virginia. Congratulations, Katie. And at this time, we'll clap. Oh, no, 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 no. In one sentence, what exactly is all of that?
Um, I would say gathering stories from individuals with specific learning disabilities of how they overcome negative experiences of stigma to go on to gain competitive employment, the support systems they needed, and kind of how they were able to reframe their disability to shine their strengths.
Well done. Two rounds of applause. And are you going to publish or not, Katie? That's my follow-up question. Okay, very good. That's, we'll have a publisher as well. Thank you. Thank. High school athlete recognitions, we have a high school senior, Elena Ziegler. I know many of you know, she set a new school record for career volleyball kills in a match against New Oxford in late August with her 101,071th kill. Also, Kaylor, Kaylor Orman, high school junior, also reached an impressive milestone on volleyball court by achieving 1,000 career assists during the early September game against Redline. Congratulations to these athletes. Last but not least, we had an incredible marching band spectacular on Saturday night. I know some of you were there. A shout out to everything, to the seven bands that performed, just an outstanding event. It's been going on for many, many years. The music boosters should be congratulated for pulling it off. And the whole music department was there in force. And it really does show off what I think is the best stadium in all of York Adams League. It shows off that to many, many people from all around the county and beyond. And I think anytime we can get folks to come and enjoy the facilities that we have as a good night, in addition to the fantastic music. So a shout out to the music department for that. It was outstanding.
Thank you so much for that. Correspondence, I do just have a brief statement. On Wednesday, September 17th, our Springer of Leadership and staff rose to the occasion, putting the safety of our students first. To every adult working in our schools, thank you. Your care, courage and dedication means more than words can say. Today, as we grieve the loss of three remarkable individuals who touched so many lives, we are reminded that the true strength of Spring Grove lies within its people, their compassion and unwavering commitment to one another. May we continue to stand together as a community and honor the legacies of Cody, Mark and Isaiah. All right, moving on to the legislative update with Dr. Renat.
The briefest thing I'll say all night, we don't have a budget. I'm just saying. And Mark Zap has assured me that we still have ample funds, both through the. Okay, that's not his word. We have enough money, sufficient funds to cover the expenses that we have. But there'll come a time that this won't be a laughing matter. And that already is not a laughing matter for many, many districts who do not have the money coming in for, for taxes and also don't have adequate fund balances. As we all know, a fund balance is like an insurance policy. And when things like this happen, we know that we have that money set aside in a savings account of sorts to make sure that we could cover those expenses. But thankfully, right now, the tax money's flowing in enough, Mr. Zap, to make us be able to pay our bills. But they'll, they'll come in time. So we're all, and not just for districts in the state, but we're all hoping that that can be resolved as quickly as possible. That's all I have on legislative report.
Hi. I know Mr. Ritz is absent, but is there an update? Okay, thank you. Moving on to York Adams Academy with Mrs. Baum.
All right, we meet, the YAA meets next week. And currently we have six students enrolled.
Thank you, Karen. We do have special committee joint board reports, both with Mr. Stiles, the Spring Grove branch of the YMCA of the Roses, as well as York Learning Center.
Thank you. I think the YMCA of Roses is linked. They met on the, the ninth of, of September. There was a tour that took place. I was actually late to get to the meeting. I had a commitment with the district, but did make it to the meeting to, to cover the, the, the rest of the report that's in front of you. The renovations is moving along. The corporate board is going to meet on site October 20th and take a tour. And then there's various activities that's going on. And then this morning, we got a chance to meet the new CEO for the, for the Y. Mike Smith visited us at the ESC. So if there's any questions with that report, I'd be happy to answer them.
I, I do have a question on the YMCA. I took notice in their report that they patched most of the roof, that they didn't have to replace a lot of it. Is that?
Yeah, so the roof, everything that is the school district, they put a new roof on. And, and then the rest of the building, the other 80%, 75%, they just patched as, as needed. We were informed this morning that they're going after another RACP grant to, to do the, to put a new roof on, as well as the balance of the rooftop units that they didn't replace. The York Learning Center, they met the 17th of, of September. They reported that there was 299,000. The York Learning Center, they met the 17th of September. They reported that there was $299,000 left over from the budget from last year after the debt surplus was paid off. They rolled that into the capital reserve. Capital reserve balance is 2.3 million. A motion was approved and granted for ratification of hiring K C B A to perform a feasibility study on the current facilities. A new member from Red Lion was introduced. And the next meeting, which is an additional special meeting, is scheduled for October 15th to go over the results of that feasibility study. And then determine next steps of what they're going to do with either renovation of their building or look at additional properties to build on. Any questions on that? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Bill. A motion to approve the official minutes from August 25th, regular voting meeting, September 8th voting meeting and director's study forum, and September 15th curriculum committee meeting. Second, all in favor?
Rachel?
Yeah.
Can I share a little bit about the, because I didn't see a spot in here to share a little bit of what the curriculum committee did, unless I'm missing it? Is that okay if I share that? Because we were, before we discussed about the idea of sharing a little bit out of their committees. And our curriculum committee is trying something a little new. We are inviting, we have set dates throughout the year where we're inviting departments throughout the district to come present to our committee. It is really more of a discussion about hearing from them what sort of hardships they're maybe having, or maybe things that they need to be really successful. And I thought our very first meeting, which was with K two six E L A, I think I'm speaking, speaking for the whole committee. I think it was very effective and it went really well. There wasn't anything that came out of it to bring to the board yet at this, at this time, but I think it went, I think it went really well. I don't remember the, I would think the next department is music and art and staff. So we'll, we'll see where that goes and I'll, I'll report back whatever we find.
Awesome. Thank you. Moving to Treasures Report with Mr. White.
Treasures Report for the month ending August of 2025. We have general fund checking at 13,210,000. Nutrition Service Fund, 1,614. Capital Reserve Fund, 1,465. And then we have the Bond Fund at 7,798,000. And then Student Activities Fund of 154,000. So moves Treasures Report.
Second, roll call vote on Treasury Report. Yes. All right. Moving to budget, back to budget and finance with Mr. White.
Budget and Finance Board Actions Requested. We have A Accounts Payable List as listed, one through seven. Then we have B 2627 Budgetary Timeline, approval of the attached 2627 Budgetary Timeline for Preparation, Review and Approval of the General Fund and Nutrition Service. And then we have C Student Information System on the Sapphire One Year Extension. Approval Extend the Current Contract with the Sapphire Software for one year, not to exceed 92,000. Maintaining Support Service at Additional Cost of $3,952. Providing continuity with our current data system operations, allowing time for Technology Department to evaluate other S I S resource in consideration. So moves Budget and Finance.
Second. Any discussion? Oh. I don't have it. Sorry. No, okay. Sorry. You go ahead, Mr. White.
Now I gotta do a write-up tomorrow. So we have D 2526, Additional Fundraising Organization. Approval to add Northern York County Regional Police Department, a tax-exempt, non-for-profit entity to the 2526 list of fundraising organizations approved for student and/or staff to raise funds during the school year. So moves Budget and Finance.
Yes. Addressing the general fund checked listing, when I was reading through that, I saw a number of fairly large ticket items. And I am curious whether we, the board can ask for. I don't want the board, it's not our job, my opinion. I don't, I don't think it's my opinion. Our job is not to approve every single expense for every department, but I would appreciate some sort of presentation or summary. I don't want a full presentation, like a written up summary for purchases made over, I don't know, $10,000. Just to go, this is why we're doing that. This is what, this is what that's for, just so I can have an idea about why certain things are, like why we're spending certain funds on things. I'll give a couple of examples that struck me. There's $66,000 for a computer lab refresh. And that felt like a lot of money. And I was completely unaware that, I mean, 66,000 feels like a lot to me. There was a 92 and a half thousand dollar truck purchased. And I, from what I remember, the things that we kind of kicked into our next budget, there was like a truck, like not purchasing a truck. And I didn't, when I saw that, I didn't know, is that that truck? Is this a different truck that we're replacing? What truck was that? And then like the Zoom, like we're it's over $15,000 to like upgrade our, our Zoom. And I was curious, you know, are we still, is every teacher still need a Zoom license? It's not 2020 anymore. Do we need to be doing that? So like, there were some things that if I could just get a little feedback on, or the board could get a feedback on as to why we are spending large chunks of money at times.
Yeah, I think from an overarching standpoint, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, Dr. Renault. Each department is given their annual budget. So it's not just a umbrella of a budget. Each department is given a budget and where they choose to allocate those funds is through you, correct? Is that how that operates?
And to use the word choose, so each site administrator does oversee their budget, but I'll just use Chris because I'm looking at him. But we work with Chris basically weekly on his technology budget. His technology budget goes out at least five years. That is presented to the board. So we know that, we know what the next five years looks like as far as capital equipment, replacement, servers, iPads, that sort of thing, refresh cycles. So those things are, there's, there's a certain like items that, that Chris's, that technology budget would have. Now, for example, if, if he makes a recommendation and says, I don't need to do a refresh, or I may need to do a refresh because I can get a better trade-in price, like we had talked about last year for some of his iPads. He does have that discretion. And ultimately, he does work with the business department to say, here's the reason why I want to do this. I hope that answers your question, but every site administrator, all building principals, site administrators, like Mr. Rank, Mr. Stiles, Mr. Laux, they all have discretions around their budget, which ultimately, Mrs. Lebo and myself, we, we consolidate all this budget and we present that to the school board every year. So you ultimately do approve the entire budget. Each site administrator, they have their little like operating budgets. The high school has their own. Middle School, Intermediate School, New Salem Paradise, Springer Elementary, they each have their own. Athletics has their own. Mr. Stiles has his technology. I'm sure I'm missing a few. I'm sorry, Michelle.
The administrators get their bucket of money and how they choose to allocate it is, is their decision. With, with her view of other people.
Yeah. And there's a certain, there, there, a lot of the, a lot of the budget is already called for. So for example, Mr. Stiles, he, his electricity budget is approximately $700,000 a year. He doesn't have a choice to say, I'm not going to pay my electric bill, or I'm going to turn off the lights. He doesn't have that choice. Or at least we don't give him that choice. We want electricity, we want heat, we want our boilers working, our H V C units working. So he, there's a certain limit that he has. Now, for example, if snow plowing, he may put, he may put $15,000 for, for snow plow material for, for this coming winter. If it doesn't snow, I hope it snows, but if it doesn't snow, he may say, okay, I'm going to now use that $15,000 and maybe buy a part or maybe buy something that, that he has put in also. There, he does have some discretion to certain parts of that, but does that answer?
That answers my question, but I want to make sure it answers part of yours. Like the purchases are within their aligned budget. Is that what you're looking for?
So I, I, I know that those of some people here, we, we've had a ton of budget and finance meetings when leading into last year's budget. And I would like for, if possible, this next budget approval to maybe run more smoothly. And that's not fault to you, Mark, but it's a lot of things going on. And I know that there are some people on the board who have made statements saying, I think that there's more money that can be saved in the district. And unless we ask questions or are aware of how money is being spent, I don't know how we ever locate. Don't mishear me. It's not a misuse of funds. I think that the money that we're spending is like, people are making those decisions because it's, they believe what is best for our district. But sometimes a decision needs to be made where a large purchase or a new purchase maybe shouldn't be made. And I guess it's kind of like an, it's like an oversight thing. I don't want to be, like, I don't want us sitting up here and then needing to approve at every board meeting anything that's over $10,000. I, I don't want that. But just to be more aware, so that when we do get into budget time and the community or employees or board members say, I still feel like there's money in there. I don't, I don't know how else we know what was, like, what could possibly be cut or better understood. I'll give one more example is when I saw, like, there were two checks for dash mechanical. And I don't know if that's a, not looking for the specific reasons why that was, but if it's like, oh, are we just taping on? Are we just trying to hold something together that's rickety? And if we heard what that money is being spent on, I was like, $25,000 if it's, no, Bill, just go replace that thing. So we don't keep nickel and diming our, our way. Like, I just feel like it would be.
Hear you, but the last thing I want to do is micromanage. And I want to trust the people that, that kind of sit at these tables to hear what we're saying and that we've been saying since we approved the last budget where we were talking about cutting people. You know, I, that's, that's where I come from, where I, I don't want to micromanage, but I also completely trust the people at these tables to follow through with the direction of what the board wants. Does that make sense to you?
I hear you. I don't, so I'll maybe try to rephrase this. I believe that I believe that every person who is in charge of each of their departments are making good and sound decisions for themselves, but our job as a board is to make sure that the entire district is running efficiently, right? Like, I mean, I'll just use, I'm gonna pick on Bill a little bit because that was one of the things, like the $92,000 truck, I am sure that he believes that that is what's most important for his department. But we are in charge of the whole. And so if the organization, the board believes that that money may have been better spent somewhere else. That's not, it's not Bill's job. Bill's job isn't to look at every other department. Well, is that really what you do, Mark? Or is it, or is it just to make sure that everyone has their money? Or are you meeting with each of the departments throughout the district to determine this is the most efficient, best use of all of our funds? Do you ask those questions?
So a little bit of both. Yes. I think that, and you know, I know, I'm not going to put Mrs. Lebo on the spot, but every P O, every, every purchase has to go through a process. So for example, before, before Mr. Stiles would want to order something, there would have to be a process that he would have to go through. So for example, that truck, that truck was probably ordered, I believe, over a little, almost two years ago. And onto a budget and because of COVID and because of some other, I, I think it was like a 64-week process and then and I'm, I'm, I'm just talking a little bit about that truck first, but there's a process that were probably almost two years ago that that truck was, was even ordered. So going through that process, Mr. Stiles probably has anywhere between seven and nine vehicles. And the process is that every two or three years, a vehicle is replaced so that when we get to 21-year-old vehicle, that's what we're kind of looking at as far as doing a replacement. We present those capital reserve supplies, inventories, procedures, anything that needs to be approved, we, we present that to the school board every year. So that there's a process. So Bill's process would be, hey, I've got the approval from the school board on some of these things is there is no, there's no like showstoppers. So I have a 21-year-old truck. It's, and, and I, I know this one by example, but F-550 was costing us way too much money to put into it for, it's on its second engine through Ford. We're, we're putting way too much money into the, into the transmission. The, the truck is only worth X number of dollars. It makes sense for us to get a new truck. That discussion happened well over two years ago. Or it was ordered two years ago. So the discussion probably happened three years ago. We go through those processes. Then, and then when that truck then is finally, it gets to that process, a P O is then cut through Jen's office. And then ultimately I have to approve all P O. So I see every, I pretty much see every, on a daily basis, see every P O. We question everything from whether it's something that is needed. If, if they, number one, we first ask if it's budgeted, if they have it, if it's not budgeted, what are they moving around within their allotted budget? So answer, answer Mrs. Robal's question. Yes, that's a lot of our job on a daily basis.
So if board members say that they believe that there is money that can be saved in the district or reallocated, how do they go about finding that or?
I think it starts with what you suggested, an earlier budget process. I think that as site administrators, like right now, we're, we're wrapping up our, our last year's audit. So we'll know exactly where we're going to start with. So sometime in the end of September, beginning of October timeframe, we'll be opening up budgets then for site administrators to say, okay, let's start working on next year's budget. Is there any supplies, personnel, those types of things? And then they'll work with their staff on compiling their budgets. Jen and I will, will travel around to every site administrators at least once, if not two or three times. And as they're developing, developing their budgets, we're asking them what, you know, those questions. We're not looking at any increases unless, unless there's something that's out of the ordinary. So I can tell you, there's site administrators here. They haven't seen an increase in, in many, many years to any of their budgets. So they need to stay within their means. So we will meet with them. We'll work on, on, on a budget package. And then we'll ultimately then put all of that together for presentation to the school board. I think that in that, as we get into that November and December timeframe, would be a good time to start what I would say diving into. So you can actually see what the site administrators are budgeting for. So you could see if Mr. Rank has a technology refresh in one of the classrooms, or he's looking, or, or Mr. Stiles is saying, okay, I'm looking at, you know, purchasing a new vehicle that's X number of years old. And these are the reasons why.
While we're on budget and finance, we are going to start putting together meetings for budget and finance. So what we're going to do, because now, you know, last year, we were limited to information and timely. we are going to start putting together meetings for Budget and Finance. So what we're going to do, because now, you know, last year we were limited to information and timely. Now this year we're ahead of that. So I want, I'm asking each board member to come to the table, send me an email or text of three things that you're looking specifically for that we can turn that over to Jen and Mark to get a head start. That way we're not sitting there at these meetings going, well, we all do this and we all do that. If you don't come with any items and you come to the meeting, you're not going to have a say, period. And that doesn't mean you, you email Jen and Mark, you know, 20 million things all day. Come with an agenda. Let's put it together. And then, you know, the nine of us can work together to come up with an actual budget, what we're looking for, how to implement it, how to put it together. And, and go over the things that you're asking. So if each department head has a budget, then if it's itemized, we should be able to look at that. Not that we're here to micromanage, but you know, have a better idea of what they're looking to spend on, what they're looking to see, et cetera, et cetera. So if you guys want to start thinking about that and, and forwarding that, we can start getting some meetings together, committing meetings.
Perfect. Thanks, Doug. Any further discussion on Budget and Finance? All right. Roll call.
Ramsey. Wilson. Share. Barsinger. Bomb. White.
Yeah.
Royal ball.
Yes. Right. Moving on to Buildings and Grounds with Mr. Ramsey.
Question. Letter of Intent to Sell. Approval to send the attached communication acknowledging the Board of School Directors' intent to sell the Spring Grove Area School District Educational Service Center located at 100 East College Avenue, Spring Grove, to the Spring Grove Area Historical Preservation Society at a future date to be disclosed following the impending transition of district offices from the ESC to the Roth Church Road campus. So moved on Buildings and Grounds.
Second, any discussion? Roll call vote on Buildings and Grounds. Yes. All right. Moving on to Transportation with Mrs. Wilson.
Transportation Board Actions Requested. Letter A 2025-2026 Christ Bus Van Drivers as Listed. So moved on Transportation Board Actions.
Any discussion? Roll call vote on Transportation. Moving on to Policy with Mrs. Bond.
Policy Board Actions Requested. Letter A Second Reading. Approval of a second reading for the following policies as listed one through eight. Letter B Citizen Advisory Committee Member. Acknowledgement of the following. Additional individual to serve on the 2526 Citizen Advisory Committee. The Rocket Promise per Board Policy 903, Nicole Wilson. Letter C Designation. A Vote for PSBA Officers. Approval for Mark Zap, School Board Secretary to register votes on behalf of the Board of School Directors for the 2026 election of the following PSBA governing board officers to serve in the position and for the term indicated. One to six as listed. Letter D Donations. Acknowledgement and/or Acceptance of the Following Donations in accordance with Board Policy 702 Gifts, Grants and Donations as listed. So moved on Policy Board Actions.
Second, any discussion?
And I need a separate vote for B.
Great. Roll call vote on A1.
White.
Yeah.
Share. Barsinger.
Yeah.
Stein. Wilson.
Yes.
Yes. Roll call vote on Letter B.
Wilson. Bomb. Barsinger.
Yeah.
Share. Stein. White.
Yeah.
Ramsey.
Yes. All right. Roll call vote on Policy, all remaining.
Bomb. Ramsey. Wilson.
Yes.
Share. White.
Yeah.
Barsinger.
Yeah.
Stein.
Yeah.
Yes. Right. Moving on to Personnel with Mr. Stein.
Personnel Board Actions Requested. Item A Approval to Advertise. Approved to Advertise for two temporary part-time over-enrollment aid positions, four hours each at New Salem Elementary for coverage at the fourth grade level, effectively immediately through the end of the 2526 school year. Item B Teacher Appointment. Approval of following teacher appointment. Katie Nierhaus, School Counselor. So moved on Personnel.
Second, any discussion? Roll call vote on Personnel.
White.
Yes.
Share. Bomb.
Yeah.
Stein.
Yes.
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 Katie, this is your time to shine. If you want to stand up, please. She's waited patiently all night. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Welcome aboard. We're happy to have you. All right. Moving on to Curriculum with Mr. Barsinger.
Curriculum Board Actions Requested. An Overnight Conference Request. Approval for Bill Stiles to attend the 2025 PASBO Safety Boot Camp Facilities and Transportation Conference. So moved is Board or Curriculum.
Second, any discussion? Roll call vote on Curriculum.
Stein.
Yeah.
See? Barsinger.
Yeah.
Bomb.
Yeah.
White.
Yeah.
Royal ball.
Yes. Moving to Athletics and Music with Mrs. Wilson.
Athletics and Music Board Actions Requested. An overnight trip for approval for eligible members of the varsity golf team and designated chaperones to travel to and participate in the PIA double A state championships at Penn State Golf Courses in State College PA, October 20th through the 22nd. So moved on Athletics and Music.
Second, any discussion? Roll call vote on Athletics and Music.